I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals, May 14th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, Town Law, First Law Conference Room. Could everybody please stand to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, a nation united in its own constitution and sovereignty.
Roll call, duck in, present. Aaron.
Here.
Kevin.
Here.
Danny. Chuck Wilcock.
Here.
Marty, not present. Andrew.
Yes, sir.
Jonathan.
Yes, sir.
Present. And Lori, present. Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna open to public applicant 24 slash 25 dash 19. Larissa and White request a variance of part 10.8.3, non-conforming lots slash no changes allowed slash changes proposed. Part 24.5.1, street line setbacks, 25 feet required, 17.5 to the stairs of Salt Meadow Road, 14.5 feet to the house in 21.1 feet to stairs, Summerfield Road proposed. And part 24.5.3, other line setbacks, 15 foot required, 9.5 feet to house proposed with zoning regulations to permit the construction of a 2,593 square foot house with front porch and side stairs with landing at one Salt Meadow Lane, map three slash lot 250, Residence A District Coastal Area Management Zone. Who are we representing the applicant?
Hi, good evening, Edward Casella, representing Larissa White, who's here this evening, the owner of One Salt Meadow Lane. She's here seeking variances to tear down the existing structure on that property and seeking to rebuild a new more conforming house. I'll share my screen. Okay, here's our site plan. This property is a 7,600 square foot lot that's currently improved with a 960 square foot house with a lower basement level that includes a drive under garage. In addition to the house, there's an existing 192 square foot rear deck and a front landing with steps down to the grave. So as I said, the applicants are seeking to tear down and rebuild a new structure. You know, mostly the same location, but more conforming in all respects. The property is also, feature of it that bears note, is the property is a corner lot. So it's located at the corner of Salt Meadow on the west and Summerfield Road on the south.
Attorney Casella.
Yeah.
I failed to mention who was seated.
Sure, please go ahead.
Seated for tonight's applicant will be myself, Aaron, Kevin Dantry, Alfred Wilcock, and Andrew. Bye.
I apologize. Okay, so the variance is needed. On the Salt Meadow roadside, we're requesting a variance of 17.5 feet to the new stairs coming off the front landing. On the north side, a variance of 9.5 feet to the side yard setback. There are no variances needed on the east side. And then on the south side, which is Summerfield Road, variance of 14.5 feet to the house and 21.1 feet to stairs that are coming off of the rear of the house. We're also seeking a variance because the lot is only 7,600 square feet where 12,500 square feet is required. Property is in Cornfield Point, it's not located in a flood zone. So it's out of FEMA. And the resulting house will be compliant with coverage at 17% and gross floor area at 33.7%. And we have architectural plans that demonstrate the house will meet the height requirement at 33.3 feet. So our main basis for seeking approval is reductions in non-conformity. As I explained before, the existing house is non-conforming kind of in most directions. First, the existing front steps that come out go to 16.9 feet off of Salt Meadow Road. The new construction has been reconfigured, that is being brought back to 17.5. The existing house itself is non-conforming with respect to this setback on Salt Meadow at 24.7 feet. And with the new construction, we're able to eliminate that non-conformity down to 25.2 feet. So that's conforming. On the north side, the existing house is 9.3 feet with a slight shift to 9.5 feet. And then finally, on the Summerfield roadside, the south side, the existing deck goes to 12.4 feet. 192 square foot deck is almost entirely within the setback that is being eliminated completely. The new stairs are the only thing on the rear that the variance is requested to get into the rear of the house, 21.1 feet. And the house itself is existing, 14.2 feet and is being shifted to 14.5 feet. So in every instance, non-conformities are being improved. And as stated before, coverage remains compliant, 17 in gross floor area, 33.7. We do have a corner lot, so the two front yard setbacks are imposed, 25 feet on the south side, where it would normally be 15 feet if it were not a corner lot. Property is consistent with the neighborhood and the comprehensive zoning plan. And the new house will, you know, be right in line with many other improved properties in the beach area. I don't know if there's any questions.
Any of the board members have any questions of the applicant? Kevin, any questions?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory. As I can, as I see, it's pretty close to the existing footprint. Is that correct?
Yeah, one thing I didn't point out is there is, one of the reasons it can't be shifted any further back, we are making the house non, we are making the house conforming, it's just the steps are gonna remain non-conforming is the leach field, you can see on the survey, is, you know, double row here is constructed to the rear of the house. So we're kind of pushed as far back as we can be.
Gotcha.
Aaron, any questions?
No.
Any questions? Any questions you have at all?
As I understand it, on the three sides where there are non-conformities, they are all being reduced.
Correct.
And if I'm correct, I understand it, it's an irregular shaped lot and it is a corner lot. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion? Would you like me to make? Oh, sorry, I apologize. I'm gonna close this and open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anybody on Zoom which would like to speak for or against this application? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. Discussion. We don't want to discuss this anymore than we've actually discussed it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Do you like me to make a motion?
I would love you to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve 24 slash 25 dash 19.
But.
To make a motion to close the public hearing.
I don't have to make a motion to close the public hearing.
That's what we're doing.
No, we don't have to do that. Okay.
Sorry.
You do, Chuck.
What?
You do have to make a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing, make the motion to close public hearing. Second, all those in favor, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve 24 slash 25 dash 19. And the reason is the proposed house will be shifted back and reconstructed in a slightly smaller footprint from north to south. The current house is non-conforming at 24.7 feet off Salt Meadow Lane. And the new house will be compliant at 25.2 feet. The existing stairs are not compliant on Salt Meadow Lane at 16.9 and we're more conforming at 17.5. To the north, the existing house is 9.2 feet off the property line, which is reduced to 9.5. Finally, on Summerfield Road, the existing house is 14.2 feet off the road and will be reduced to 14.5. The existing deck from the east side of the house also extends within the street line setback for Summerfield to 12.4. The deck will be eliminated and replaced with an at-grade patio, which does not count as coverage. Proposed stairs off the addition we located 21.1 from the property line. These reductions of non-conformity are standalone basis for granting a variance. And I'd like to also add that, you know, it is basically on the same footprint. There's no expansion of use. So that is my motion.
May I make a friendly amendment?
You may.
I'd like to add that it is, part of the hardship is that it is a corner lot with two 25-foot setbacks on an irregular shaped lot. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll be recusing myself from the next appeal and exiting the meeting.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Give me a minute to, okay, for this next applicant, seated will be myself, Aaron, Andrew, and Lori, and Jonathan. Oh, sorry, and, I'm sorry, and Alfred Wilcock.
Jonathan, Andrew will be seated.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, so I'm out, right?
Yes, for the second, because I'm gonna give everybody an opportunity. Will be myself, Aaron, Chuck, will be Jonathan and Lori. Why? I've taken him off. I'm taking him off, yes, because he's already sat on one. I'm gonna let everybody sit up on it.
Hey Chuck, since Andrew is in person, it may be better to seat him.
Okay, so what I'll do is I will, I will remove Jonathan and I will replace him with the end.
Just a thought. Chuck, I appreciate you, you know, sharing the love, but you know.
Okay, thank you.
In the future, let's do musical chairs.
Prior to starting this applicant, how many lawyers do we have in the room that will be speaking in public comment besides?
Attorney, uh, Berkery, Berkery's on line, I see that.
Okay. Okay, so. Right, so we have attorney. Okay, we, do we have attorney Willis? I'm just curious, just wanted to make sure he was also an attorney that was pretty represented by zoning, since he's not here, so you'll just be yourself, the attorney representing the neighbors and our attorney. Next, okay.
And if you, you can let attorney Berkery into the meeting too.
Yes.
Yeah, can we get Nick's last name for the record?
Yeah, B-A-M-O-N-T-E. And he represents the zoning board of appeals, he's our attorney.
B-A-M-O-N-T-E.
Correct.
And it's representing the owner?
He's representing the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay. Application 24 slash 25, that is 24, 25. Theodas Viswisky.
Viswitz.
Viswitz seeks a variance of part 10.8.1 and 10.8.3, non-conforming lots slash 12,500 square feet required, 8,800 square feet proposed with the zoning regulations to permit the construction of a 2,743 square foot house at 24 Villa Road, map one slash lot 89, Residence A, District Coastal Area Management Zone, AE13 flood zone. The floor is yours.
Okay, good evening again, Edward Casella, representing Thaddeus, who goes by Ted Viswitz and Phyllis Viswitz, who are both here this evening, they're the owners of the property, 24 Villa Road, for which we are seeking a variance. 24 Villa Road is a parcel land that is 8,800 square feet and does not contain any principal structures on it. The applicant is seeking variances of section 10.8.1 and 10.8.3 to construct a new house on the 8,800 square foot parcel. So we've reviewed the correspondence from attorney Willis on behalf of the zoning commission and attorney Berkery on behalf of the neighboring property owner and understand the issue related to the question of merger under the old Saybrook zoning regulations and how it applies to this property and what the board ultimately does with it. Would like to make just a few factual points without belaboring what's extensively in the record. These properties have always been deeded as separate parcels. So if you, if you look at the deeds and the deed histories in there, this is actually three cornfield point lots. 24 Villa Road, the subject is two parcels, it's lot 525 and it's lot 524 of the original Cornfield Point subdivision. 26 Villa Road is lot 526. And if you look at the deeds in the record, and I can, I can share my screen and show a couple, you can see that, you know, for example, the most recent, the most recent deed that came out has, when you look at the legal description, there's a property description for 26 Villa Road. And right in there is lot 526, 40 by 110. And then 24 Villa Road, you can see lot 524 and 525, each 40 by 110. So the claim that these are deeded in one deed, they've always been separately allocated pieces of land from a title perspective. So I think that's an important part.
Excuse me, interrupted, or do you want me to wait until the end?
No, no, I think it's point, because this is very complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you have a question, do you mind if we ask at this point, rather so that those of us that are not?
Yeah.
What I'm puzzled by is you had 26 on the prior screen and you have 24 on this screen.
Correct.
Are they all one document?
It's all, it's all one document in this document, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and other deeds, it is, there are separate documents, just the way that the family was kind of divvying things up.
Because I thought that I had seen one deed where they're all three were executed on one. So, and not that a deed separates the properties, it's just.
Well, this is a deed that has all three, but you can see the first property description has two separate,
I understand that.
Specifically defined property descriptions with addresses.
Right.
And we can, we can go and look at the rest of the.
It's okay, I just wanted to, because it's just a deed at that point anyways.
Well, yeah, I mean, just a deed, a deed does have some relevance.
It's a legal document, but it's a transfer.
And there's a distinction, if you look at the deeds, you'll see 524 and 525 have always been together.
Yes.
And 526 has always been separate, which is, you know, kind of the underlying.
I don't think anybody will argue that point.
Yes. You know, the use of the properties as one has been limited in scope. We have, we included a property survey that was done recently. And you can see on the property survey, now just to orient you, here's Villa Road. The 8,800 square feet is this box. Okay, so there's one lot, two lots, three lots, right here, it's kind of hard to see. Cause then there's a fourth lot, which is, which is the corner property. There's actually four lots shown on this, but two lots are here, this is 524 and 525, otherwise known as 24 Villa Road. And then 26 Villa Road is here in this rectangle. Here's the property line that the meets and vows. And you can see five, or 26 Villa Road is self-contained for the most part. The house and the septic system, which are obviously very important components of use of property, are exclusively on this property. What goes over the line is a paper patio and fence. Those are movable, temporary and movable.
But you do, currently, there's a fence and a patio on that property.
Yeah, it's on the document, but you know, the extent is those are not permanent structures like the house in the septic system, which don't encroach over. Number three, there's no dispute that the parcels have been continuously taxed as two separate parcels. We received correspondence from the assessor regarding the valuation of $88,000. It's still a valuation of $88,000 for a piece of property that cannot independently be used if the argument of the zoning permission and the argument of the neighboring property owners is accepted. And that's a very high valuation for, you know, excess acreage essential. And the fourth thing is, again, just from a factual perspective, the attorney Berkery mentions that the properties were listed as a double lot. Actually, not, not a double lot. It's arguably, if anything, a triple lot, but the double lot is what we're trying, seeking to obtain permission to construct on.
Well, in reality, 24 is a double.
24 is a double.
When it was first, when Cornfield was first.
Yeah, as it, as it developed through the forties and 19s.
Back in 1922, I think it was.
Well, yeah, exactly. Some people bought the singles, some people bought more than one, kept them together, built, you know.
Exactly, but we're 100% positive that there was no pre-existing structure on that property. Non-conforming.
I haven't gone back all the way, but.
But that's what, it appears that nothing was been built on that property.
That's my understanding. There's nothing there now.
And there's nothing there now, right? Okay.
We do have different opinion from the other attorneys regarding whether variance can be granted to build a house. It is under the purview of the ZBA to determine whether these properties have actually been merged. And even if they have been merged, whether a variance of 1081 and 1082 or 1083 can be allowed. You know, they were never merged by deed, as I said. They were always taxed separately. And what we're seeking is a variance essentially of the contiguous ownership provision, just like we seek a variance of any other provision of the regulations, whether it's a setback, whether it's a side regulation. You know, it's the same concept that we have here with the ZBA tonight. And, you know, I think it's important to review what your charge is in determining whether to grant a variance in an application like this, right out of the zoning regulations and not a case law, frankly. You know, the ZBA's charge is to determine and vary these regulations in harmony with the general purpose and intent with consideration for conserving public health, safety, convenience, welfare, property values solely with respect to a parcel of land where, because of conditions, especially or uniquely, right? This is the unique, especially affecting the parcel, but not generally affecting other parcels in the district, a literal enforcement of the regulation would result in exceptional difficulty or undue hardship. And we have the plans of what this, what we're asking for. It's a conforming house that meets all the setbacks.
On a non-conforming lot.
Exactly, a conforming house on a non-conforming lot.
That had no structure on it up to prior, no prior structure on it, okay?
That had no prior structure. So it's a new house on a non-conforming.
Thank you, that's the way I want you to describe it.
No problem. And it's.
What was arguing that doesn't fit?
In line with everything else that's been done in this neighborhood.
Not completely.
Well, other than the timing of it.
No, because they were pre-existing homes that were modified.
Right, that's, but a lot of those weren't even modified to be within compliance with the regulations. Compliance with all setbacks, compliance with coverage, growth floor area. So that's, that's, you got me off track, but that's okay.
I just want to make sure everybody understands this and the language.
Oh, we're gonna hear a lot tonight, yes. But, but, so, you know, other than the fact that this has never been built on and has been a yard.
Correct.
It meets the regs. So it is a difficult argument for somebody to come in and say, being developed now is going to impact my property values. Is going to have a detrimental effect on me, because it meets the 15-foot setbacks. It's compliant with coverage, it's compliant with all of the objective standards. And, you know, the hardship is he has a separately deeded, separately taxed piece of land that is 8,800 square feet, larger than many of the properties that are located in Cornfield Point, located in other beach associations, even located in Residence A. This is, this is a large piece of land, but the regulations, right? When you look at, when you look at the requirement, do not impact this property the way they do others because it's never been developed, back to my point earlier and your point, which is this is all about timing. So if it had been developed, then we wouldn't even be here, but the fact, the uniqueness, really, is there another 8,800 square foot vacant piece of land in Residence A that hasn't been developed?
I actually don't know the answer.
Exactly, so it's, this is not, these are not conditions that generally affect other properties in the zone. And that's, as we read your charge, that's what we're asking you to make a determination. And then, then the literal enforcement of the regulations results in exceptional difficulty or undue hardship. So you have an 8,800 square foot parcel that can't be used except as a side yard, essentially. So in my opinion, that's an exceptional difficulty that restricts somebody's reasonable use of their property.
Well, if I'm correct though, they could merge those two and build a larger home.
And build a bomb.
Yes, they could actually, couldn't they? In a compliant, on a compliant lot, right?
Well, it's not, it's, well, yeah.
Yeah, not compliant, within 12,800 square, 12,500. And I believe that they, it was known that they'd be getting an 80% adjustment because it was considered unbuildable.
Still $88,000.
I'm just asking that, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And they, with that ownership of that lot, they were able to utilize all the facilities associated with Cornfield Point. Am I correct part of that association?
I don't, I don't, I don't know the.
Just asking the question.
I don't know the rules of Cornfield Point. I know some beach associations have tried to restrict that and say it has to be a house, but I don't know.
I don't know either, that's what I was asking.
I'm sure somebody here does. So. If anything, you want to?
Evening, everyone.
Did you really state your name? For those who don't know.
Joe Ren, professional engineer of, of Indigo. And no, this one's, this one's more of a, it's legal opinion that he just discussed with you because we, we worked very hard, you know, we got an A2 survey of this property and the licensed surveyor went out, did a survey of the property, looked at all the deeds of the surrounding properties, he gave us a map showing this was a separate lot. So that's, that comes into my office as a separate lot. Working with the Viswitzes, let's make sure that this meets all the zoning dimensional criteria. So what you see here, the porch, the septic system, the house, all of that meets everything. All the setbacks, all the coverages, all the floor area, we got our health approval. It's a totally viable building lot. We're very often in front of you with lots half the size or even less than.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing with you that you built within the buildable area.
Right.
I don't think that's even the argument we're having right now. Because it's a lovely house and it fits within the setbacks, but I don't think that's the argument we have right now.
Exactly, and that's why I started out. Exactly, and that's why I started out the way that, because this was a total surprise to me. We actually, we actually submitted, because we got this map, we actually submitted a certificate of zoning compliance.
Right.
With a flood permit for this house, thinking that we didn't need variances. We, we, um, you know, it, it, it's an existing non-conforming lot of record, that's the information that we had.
Right.
We can meet all the dimensional zoning stuff, so it's, it's like
Yeah, because I was surprised why they, they went and did all that work prior to this. I was confused.
Yeah, well, you know, that's why you have an A-two survey done.
Yeah, because there's a lot of money that's been spent up to this point, but we haven't defined whether it's a buildable lot.
Right, and that, that's why I just wanted to make that point, because someone who's more certified than most of us in the room to make that opinion is a licensed land surveyor.
Right.
Uh, and or, uh, legal. And, um, again, you know, we had a plan, a map that was, and it wasn't a twenty-year-old map. It was a map that was just prepared last year. They came down, they did the research, they prepared the map, and this was their opinion. There's that lot between the, I mean, there's that property line between the two properties. Um, so, you know, we're not proposing to change it or make it smaller or make it different or anything. It's just what they gave us on a map. So their opinion is that it's a
So I, I guess my question is, the lot was recently purchased. Am I correct?
Yes.
And the, and the individuals that purchased the lot, they must have known that this lot was deemed non-buildable. Because it's written everywhere. I'm just assuming, or they did not, no one made them aware of it. I, I'm just asking.
I don't know how it's written everywhere.
But I, I, yeah, Chris, I looked at the, I, I just see it, it's, you've got an eighty percent reduction. Wasn't an accident.
It's an eighty-eight thousand dollar, it's, I, I don't think that strikes as being an eighty percent reduction. Well, I've done the math, but
And so it said, but I just, you know, the, the homeowners that purchased the land had no idea that the lot was
Do you want to speak with that?
I'm just curious, you had no idea that it was a non-buildable lot?
Oh, that's correct. And, and the only other thing I'd like to add is, identify yourself. I'm Ted Beisowitz.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, patio, it's shown existing patio and existing driveway have already been revoked.
Oh, I'm not, that's not even the question. I just want you to understand, and I understand that you could pull it back. The real issue at hand is that it's, it's considered to be a non-buildable lot. Were you aware at any time when you purchased this property that it was non-buildable?
No, and, and I'm not sure how you would find that, so we
The tax records kind of like indicates that's a very reasonable price for the property, to be honest with you. Uh, I, I'm just surprised that, that, that no one made a comment to you and that you came and mentioned this blind. Yeah, the property sold as one property, yeah.
The twenty-four and twenty-six is sold as one piece. Has it always been like that? That it's always been together, the twenty-four and twenty-six?
It's been in the same family.
It's, it's always been sold together, okay? When, if, if, I guess some, someone passed away, then it went into a trust. I tried following the logic on it. I got confused even going through it all. But I was just curious, as the current purchaser, you had no idea that that was a non-buildable lot next to you?
Well, and, and if I were to read that tax information, I would say to myself, gee, that's five hundred thousand dollars an acre. And, you know, and so what I do for a living is actually build houses.
I know you do, that's why I'm asking. See, I know you build houses. That's why I'm asking you for a clear.
So the answer is, I felt comfortable that that was fine and not that I actually saw that.
Okay.
So we did not see that prior to the closing.
That's the only reason, because I know that you were building, I was just, I, I was just wanted to verify you had no idea.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So twenty-four and twenty-six are together, so it, but they're treated separately. But if he, if they were to combine it, then they could build a bigger house. But as they are now separate, twenty-four is con- con- considered unbuildable as it always has been. And what is the contiguous, contiguous owner condition? What is that?
Sure, um, the regulation, when we, when you look at ten point eight, section ten, and section ten point eight in particular, it talks about when you can develop a non-conforming lot. So Old Sabre zoning, Residence A District, which is all the beaches, actually has a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet.
Right.
So if somebody wanted to start fresh and build a subdivision, they would need to meet twenty thousand square feet. That's a, obviously, an extremely high burden compared to what you guys see on a monthly basis.
Right.
So section ten point eight is set up to give relief to property owners who have less than twenty thousand, but have twelve thousand five hundred square feet, basically. So if in Residence A, you have a non-conforming lot that you can show has been in existence before zoning regulations, and you have twelve-five, you can build, if, you know, as long as it meets other conditions. And one of those conditions is, you, I'll read it. If a lot fails to meet the area requirements of these regulations, twenty thousand, the owner of the lot will not also be the owner of contiguous land, which in combination, um, with each lot that fails to conform, would make the lot more conforming uh, to the area regulations. So that's, that's what we're seeking a variance from is, all right, look at twenty-six, is a standalone forty-four hundred square foot property with a house and with a septic system that can stand alone individually, and then eighty-eight hundred square feet is next door. And on average, that's a large lot for Cornfield Point and the beach associations. It can accommodate without any other variances, meeting setback, meeting coverage, gross floor area. So that's, that's what we're looking for to be varied by this board to allow us to move forward.
And if I'm correct, if, if, if they had had a pre-existing structure on it,
Yeah.
we wouldn't have this block, right? Because there was no pre-existing structure. And because it's not twelve thousand five hundred square feet, it's been deemed non-buildable. And you are right, if they combined the three lots, they would have a buildable. Uh, and they could do whatever they wanted, but they're trying to build on a lot that is considered to be non-buildable. And that's why they got the reduction in their taxes for, for, for as many years as I could go back.
And so here we are.
So here we are. And what I want you to, what we, we would ask you to focus on is what we, what we talked about, which is, is this a unique condition? You know, is there a separately taxed, separately-deeded eighty-eight hundred square foot parcel? Those don't generally apply, aren't generally found in the Residence A District. This is a unicorn. And so that's, that gives you a foot in the door for getting a variance, right? And then the next question is, okay, do the regulations, literal enforcement of the regulations impose hardship or exceptional difficulty? So here he has this lot valued at eighty-eight thousand dollars that can't be used in the current circumstances with the existing house on twenty-six Villa Road, keeping that and then being able to develop that. Is that exceptional difficulty or undue hardship? Because it's certainly coming from the regulations, and that's the question you all need to answer. That would, if you agree, would enable a variance to be granted, to allow the development to proceed. And if you don't agree, then it gets denied, but that's
I'm just trying to understand, I'm just really trying to understand it. And because I'm sure, I can't be positive, but there could be other properties. And yeah, and, and not necessarily in Cornfield, it could be in, in, in Knollwood. It could be in Fenwood, it could be in any Indian town where they have a, a, a piece of property. You see homes with a property and another piece next to it. You don't know if they're attached or if they're too individual.
They probably are.
And it doesn't need to be, you, it doesn't need to be the only one.
No, it doesn't need to be the only.
Right? It just needs to be conditions that affect this parcel that don't generally affect other parcels.
Right, right. And I think if the town was taxing the property as if it was buildable, the tax burden on it would be much higher. So, uh,
The other way to look at this is, if this were all one property because of merger.
Right.
And if the applicant were seeking to subdivide and get a variance for
Right.
the side yard to build on that, that would be a no-brainer. You lose.
You lose, right.
So.
If, if I can add, the original, I don't know, Ed submitted this in the application with the original subdivision plat from the early nineteen hundreds showed these two lots.
Yeah.
In the same configuration that they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, it's, yeah, we spent a lot of
Oh, I know that, we, and, and no one's arguing, no one is arguing the point about all of it. It's just if there had been something built on it.
Right.
Because, because as, as the regulations have changed.
But the original plat map expected it to be built on. They divided it.
Right, they did expect it to be built, but some were built, some weren't.
The original plat map, some third houses would be built.
Yeah, exactly, three.
We have three?
Yeah. Should we come back? But back in nineteen twenty-two, yes, they would have built. There's the potential for one at each.
You know, what I struggle with is who deems it unbuildable? I mean, I think Ted made a very strong point that from a builder's perspective and from a real estate perspective, it's a small lot, so you look at the eighty-eight thousand number, but it's a fifth of an acre. So per acre, it's five hundred thousand an acre. It's some pretty strong value. For a piece of grass.
And it's, and it's been like that for quite a bit of time.
Right.
The first time, which doesn't mean anything, it's just stating that someone recognized, and if they had merged the two, the, if the, if they had merged all three lots together and had one lot, what?
Right, the other, the other, second thing I struggle with too is what I mentioned to, what I talked to Ed about is, we do this all the time.
Right.
When it was built on, we come in here, smaller lots or equal-sized lots, and we're tearing houses down. And Old Sabre considers that starting over. They consider, as soon as that, you're proposing to tear down, they consider that lot vacant. So we have to meet all of your regulations at that point. That's where ten-seven-one is going, or ten-eight-three, ten-eight-three comes into play. Ten-seven-one is when we're adding on to an existing house. But they, it, it's frustrating to us because not all towns do that. So we have, if you have to tear down, rebuild, you have to come in and you have to meet every zoning requirement. If you don't, we need to seek variance, and that's why sometimes we have lists of variance.
Right.
But here, we're asking to imagine there's, their house, they were tearing that down and we're rebuilding, it's the same thing.
So what we're doing is we're creating a non-conformity. As far as we're concerned, as far as the ZBA is concerned, we're creating a non-conformity where none is right now.
The only, the only part of that would be lot area.
Exactly, but we are creating a non-conformity where one does not currently exist. So, I just, and I'm trying to beat the death out of this thing, so everybody, all the board members understand this. Do we have any additional questions of the applicant? And do you have any questions?
Um, I don't know if it's related, but I think one was a house, uh, at twenty-six. I'm just wondering how it got to be so close to building fifty.
Forty-fifties?
Yes.
Seventy, eighty, age seventy, you're old. I can have it.
Ten point four feet to the property.
Yeah, I was back there. Or they had the, the changes.
Because visually, it looks correct, that house looks like it's situated correctly, but reading the regulations, it's, it's clear that, uh, it, to me, that it's, the lot's not big enough. I'm not sure how the subdivision got, I mean, this.
It was, Cornfield was developed in the twenty thirty's.
Yeah, it was, it was developed, yeah.
They're all forty-four hundred lots.
Right, they're long. Exactly, forty by a hundred, if I'm correct, right?
The house was built in fifty-eight.
Forty by, yes.
House, the house, um, the existing house was built in, I think, fifty-eight.
And just for the record, because I, I, we did see something about the, the Saltier subdivision, but that was, this is not part of the Saltier subdivision.
No, that
Just for the, I, that confused me too.
That was a reference.
I know, that was a reference, but that confused me also, and then I discovered that it was, that was just erroneous information because it wasn't part of that subdivision.
I'll correct myself, fifty-five on construction.
Okay, so. So, are there any other questions of the applicant before I open it to public content? Okay. Yeah, I'm going to open it now to public comment. Who in the public would like to speak for or against this application? I assume neighbors are here that want to speak. Uh, I, I know we have several lawyers that are going to be involved. If I could, would you like to have the lawyer speak first before you ask questions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so based on that, I see we have Danielle?
Yes, hello.
Would you, I'm going to give you the opportunity to be after a speaker.
Thank you.
The, the neighbors will hear what you have to say, and I think you can make it a little cleaner, okay?
Oh, well, thank you very much. Um, my name is Attorney Danielle Berkey. I am, uh, representing, uh, two of the neighbors. Uh, Wayne and Maria Rand, who own twelve Villa Road and Twelve Point Road LLC, which is the owner of Twelve Point, uh, Road, Old Sabre. Um, I'm from the law firm of Brenner, Salzman and Wallman in New Haven. I submitted a letter on May twelfth, uh, to the board. Um, I also, uh, did provide a, a copy of my letter, uh, to the applicant's engineer, Mr. Ren, who I know well. Um, and I won't reiterate everything that I set forth in the letter. I, I know there's, um, additional communication from uh, uh, counsel for the zoning commission, uh, which is part of the record, although he's not in attendance tonight. Um, and I will just sort of, um, I guess touch upon some of the factual, uh, items that Attorney Cassella noted. And it was just that, sort of set the table broadly. I mean, many, many towns have merger provisions. Um, I practice extensively in Milford, Connecticut, where similarly, a beach community, old subdivisions with, you know, tiny lots, postage stamp lots, uh, where similarly, the town has a merger regulation. And, um, as I said in the letter, the purpose of a, a merger regulation, you know, it's to sort of balance the interests, right? On the one hand, we have changes in the regulations, where now, as opposed to a, you know, four thousand square foot lot, the zoning regulations require a twenty thousand square foot lot. Um, but, you know, an individual that owned a forty-four hundred square foot lot has a vested right to that lot. Um, but the town and the regulations under the statutes also have an interest in, uh, the reduction of non-conformities. And so merger provisions sort of, uh, attempt to sort of strike that balance, protecting vested rights on the one hand. On the other hand, reduction of non-conformities, um, as, uh, facts on the ground change. And I would say that, uh, with this case, it, it seemed to me somewhat, um, just intuitive that these lots, which have been commonly owned for a significant period of time, whether transferred, uh, on one deed or two deed, or legally described as one parcel, two parcels, under common ownership for significant period of time, and, and sort of used as one lot for a significant period of time. Although the chair is correct that there's no, uh, house on, um, twenty-four Villa Road. I mean, the encroachment of the patio, the fence onto twenty-four, the sale of the lot, not as a, a triple lot, which I believe Attorney Cassella said this was originally three lots, but as a double lot, you know, a, a nice big beach lot. Um, it, it all sort of indicates that not only has this merged by operation of law, but that these, this is one, this is one lot. And, um, I think the chair at one point said, just about everywhere you look, it says, this is one lot. Um, and so I, I will, um, you know, I know the applicant, uh, who, uh, has a, a background in real estate, said that they were unaware that it was not a building lot. Um, however, I think it's clear, under the zoning regulations, which don't even require the utilization of the, uh, second lot as part of the first lot, all the regulations require is really a, a moment in time of common ownership. A, and a lot that doesn't meet the, the requirements of the regulation, boom, the lots merge together. And so in order to undo that legal merger under your regulations, I think, uh, the, the, the chair is correct. I mean, or, we would be, they would be asking for a variance for essentially an illegal subdivision. So it used to be two, two lots, so give us two lots again. And that is not the way the regulations work, that's not the way the case law works. And, um, you know, for, for what it's worth, the way that the property was taxed, the value of the property as sold, uh, it, it, it seems to have all of the bells and whistles of one zoning lot. Uh, I would not disagree with the chair or Attorney Cassella's, uh, statement that Uh, I would not disagree with the chair or attorney Casella's, uh, statement that, you know, one new structure could be built on, you know, what was previously three forty-four hundred square foot lots. I think that is, uh, an accurate statement. However, to allow a separate building, a new building on a, on what is already a merged lot would be the, the illegal creation of, of a new lot that has previously merged. I'm not sure if there's any other questions that the board has for me.
No, we just wanted to get your.
I had a question.
Absolutely. Ask a question to the, uh.
I was puzzled by a statement you made that you need just one moment in time of common ownership to effectuate a merger. Does that mean that if a developer buys a bunch of lots with the intent of keeping them and improving each of them and selling them, reselling them? He can't do that?
Well, under the, under your regulation, no, the answer would be no. And I counsel, uh, if a developer walked into my office and said, hey Danielle, I want to buy these ten lots. The first thing that I would say.
Let me interrupt again. You said, under our regulation. Which regulation is that? Could you read it to me?
Sure. Under section ten point eight point one, so assuming that.
That's the one you need. You already got it.
Yeah, we got it. Ten point eight point one.
Yep. So, so it is, it, it is a, a, a single moment in time. So if, you know, Danielle Berkery bought these two lots and then I wanted to sell one out to, to Jane and one out to Joe, um, you know, the fact that I turned around and sold it quickly wouldn't undo the merger. Um, the, the op, the, the purpose of the merger regulation is to say, hey, you know, you, you sort of had your chance at the two, at, you know, keeping them separate. And, you know, once you, you put them under common ownership, under your regulations, uh, under common ownership, not meeting twelve thousand five hundred square feet, they lose their legal identity as zoning laws.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nick, we did, as our attorney, is there any comments that you would like to make?
Sure.
Tell the board?
Well, that would be wishful thinking, so I'll give it a shot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nicholas Pomonte, Virgil Moses, um. So obviously, as this board knows, there's two main questions in front of it right now. A, have these properties merged? B, and maybe this is the larger question in my mind. Ultimately, is, what is the hardship? And we heard from both sides here on both of these issues. I'm not sure I agree, um, wholly with either of those presentations, but what I do agree with is, number one, this board, as has been stated, does have the authority to determine whether a merger has occurred. That's based on our regulations and what our regulations say. It's also based on the facts, uh, which we've heard a lot of. Now, our regulation, and I represent numerous municipalities as well, some zoning regulations do have very express merger provisions. Um, I don't think I would categorize our regulations as doing bad. Uh, however, this board has the ability to determine whether our regs implicitly um, trigger merger in certain situations like we have in front of us tonight. You do have in the record, um, input from the zoning commission. So, um, you have that as well as all the facts that you heard. And ultimately, it is up to this board to determine whether, based on the history and based on what our regs say, whether these lots have merged. If they have, then a, a variance isn't appropriate for the reasons we heard because you would be creating effectively a s- a subdivision of another lot that doesn't exist by virtue of the merger. Um, I'll focus though, the, the largest concern I have is, is one that I've spoken to this board about before, and that is, is what's presented to us. Does that rise to the level standard necessary legally to grant a variance? If that was even something that you were thinking about doing tonight? We heard a lot about the unique aspects of the property. And the law does say things need to be unique and specific. Um, however, the case law that has really drilled down on what that statutory language means is that if there's any economic value to the property, then that's, that's not a hardship. You need zero economic value. And here, I mean, obviously, at least our assessor believes there's some value to the property as it's assessed. But the courts have actually looked at this type of situation before. And what we, the lawyers, call, uh, illegal confiscation is where there's a zoning regulation in place that in no way, shape or form, the property can be used at all effectively. Where there is a regulation that sets an area requirement of building for, for purposes of building, that has been appealed to the courts, where the applicants have said, that's an illegal confiscation. That's my hardship. The courts have disagreed. Um, there's even a case at the superior court level out of, uh, Old Sabro, where not exactly on point here, but that's also effectively my read of what the case law says. So I, in my opinion, I don't believe this meets the standard of a hardship if this board even were inclined to consider, uh, granting or denying variance for that purpose. I think I'll leave it at that for.
Uh. Thank you. Do, do any of the board members have any question about, of our attorney Nick? Okay, I just, because I know this is, it, this, there's a lot of semantics in this. Uh, I, attorney Casella's, anything that, sorry, before I, before I let them speak, was there any other comments that you would like to make as, in public comment? Or have you basically stated everything that?
Yeah, we've stated after the public speech, we, we may, uh, like an opportunity.
Okay, I just wanted to give you an opportunity prior and give the residents an opportunity. Okay, uh. The residents can come up one at a time, state your name, uh, and the property, and then we can listen to you. Okay, so whoever wants to come up and speak, if you choose to speak, this is your time. Are there any of the residents want to say anything? Just come up and state your name, where you live, and we'll listen to you.
I'm Michael Beerlot, uh, Seven Point Road. I live on my common property line at the back of this property.
Can you spell your last name for me?
T E E R N A E R T.
Yes, like.
Uh, I. I thought the analysis of the problem was, uh, very well done. I understood it the same way. I, I thought viewed this as a subdivision that is being approved now in retrospect. And the buyers bought this property concurrently, the same day the property was listed. Maybe it was listed in two parcels, but the intent was to sell it as a parcel because they took bids only in that, that way. Uh, and the, uh, the way those little lots were developed all years ago, the sidelines were not, were not qualified for any kind of reasonable fire break between those buildings. The, uh, the, the opportunity with the three lots is to put a conforming, nice, beautiful house that would enhance the neighborhood, neighborhood and the property values. It would eliminate any kind of fire issue with, because those two lots, one in the corner and the one existing structured on the, the single lot that is owned by the, uh, the same people. Um, there is like eight feet between those two houses.
Uh, there's a lot, there's a lot, just so you know, there's a lot of that. And that whole cornfield development, that's the, that's, that's not the exception.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But developing the property as a conforming lot would certainly improve that, uh, that element of it. Uh, and the lot, the property screams for development in one large, in my view. That's all there is.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak for or against this applicant? Come right up and then take your time. Relax, state your name.
My name's Richard Perry, Twenty-five West Shore Drive.
How do you spell Perry?
P A R E.
P A R E.
Um, what was your address?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
Twenty-five West Shore Drive.
West Shore Drive.
So we live at the, at the, um, right next to Scenic Overlook.
Right. I know what you're talking about. Yes.
I can be clear, we have visual of that building. Um, I want to make comments to a couple, a couple of things I heard tonight that, uh, I thought were erroneous. Um, uh, the property owners indicated that they were not made aware that this was not a billable lot. Uh, when this property came up for sale, it was a lot activity. Uh, A, it was, it's a desired area and B is, uh, the price point of that property clearly was not um, associated with two lots.
Right.
You know, there's no way what they paid for that, that associated, um, uh, for two, for the price point of two lots. Um, so clearly, um, I, we were made aware that everybody knew that that was a non-conforming lot. That it was not built, it was non-billable lot. There was no way that that was going to be accepted. Um, and then secondly is, um, we tried, there's the street points. So there are multiple other properties in Cornfield Point that have two, three, four lots, and all of those are not considered, from my understanding, non-billable lots. So if the zoning, um, um, division here was to ma- make this acceptable, that would now open the floodgates for all these other lots that, you know, are, are the same situation. And then thirdly, we, um, we actually, my wife and I, Diane, uh, personally tried to purchase the lot next door to us, or the property next door to us is Twenty-seven, um, West Shore Drive. And our intent was to build a home windows on that lot and, uh, and we're denying that request as well. So, um, we've got, we had personal experience with that. And, uh, and again, the fact that, you know, there's multiple of the properties in the same situation, I think that would be open up a floodgate. We clearly would be open to, um, that home being torn down and making, um, you know, build a nice home on those three lots. Um, certainly that, that would be acceptable to us, so.
But you were, and, and you felt that you were, you, you had a knowledge at that point that it was a non-billable.
Everybody knew it.
I don't know if everybody knew, but.
There was very, there was very well known.
There's a problem called hearsay. I don't think you can tell us what everybody.
You can't tell everybody, but.
There was, I talked, you knew it.
There was a lot of common knowledge.
Yes, yes, very much.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would come up and speak?
Hi, I'm Diane Perry, Twenty-five West Shore Drive, which is two point. Um, yeah, the Realtor, we actually went over and poked over at that house when it was for sale because it's kind of diagonal to us. And we talked to the Realtor and she did say it wasn't, it was all one parcel, it wasn't going to be buildable. And we were, we have a really nice home on the water. And we were hoping they would knock down the little house and build a really nice home in that hole. Then, because it was just up, you know, the neighborhood a little bit versus the two, because the little white house that's there that they own on their property, and there's a brick one on the corner, they are literally like five or six, you could shake hands out each.
They're pre-con.
And another concern of ours, if you were to make, give them the, um, the right to build on those two real skinny narrow lots and make them one, they could take the little white house that's there now. It's a tiny bungalow. It's maybe, I don't know, twenty feet wide. And we were concerned that they could take that and go up with it and do what want to do because usually you let your, you know, you go up on the footprint. So that would be another concern of ours that they could go up on that. And, you know, now they got two houses. And if they take also on the white house, if they take the patio and the fence away, you're talking about a lot that's probably, I don't know, thirty feet wide or something? I mean, because, I don't even, is it forty? Okay, but it's so, I mean, it's just.
That was the size of the lots back in twenty.
Okay. So, but it would be really nice if they took that little house down and just made a really nice home right there. And we do have friends in Cornfield Point that have extra lots that they pay for. And I think if, if you approve this, it's going to set a precedent that you did this for them. Why are you, you can't say no to somebody else because that becomes a more of a.
Just so you know, in ZBA, there is no precedent.
Okay.
Okay.
But we're sentient humans.
I know. We would be, we would be thrilled to see a brand new house.
I just want you to know, there is no precedent. And in, and ZBA, there is no precedent.
Okay, that's good.
So you can't use precedent.
Yeah, it would be nice to see a brand new house there. We would love it. I mean, I think it would be great for the neighborhood. Um, you know, seeing new houses, but I think they need to take the little one down. Because like I said, if they go up, they build this big one, then they add a second floor to the other one, that could be a real issue.
We can't tell them what to do on their property. We can tell them whether they can build on it. We can't tell them what to do on their existing property. They would have to come, and they didn't come in to us in regards to twenty-six.
We just want something nice there. That's, we're, we're just looking to beautify Old Sabro.
Attorney Casella?
I think there's more.
Okay, well, well, oh, come on.
Hi, Beth Griffin, G R I F I N, Five Point Road.
Five Point Road?
Yeah. Um, I'm just concerned about it turning into a subdivision. It, my whole life, that was one lot and, and everybody's mind. What a nice yard. I'd love to have that yard. In my whole life, they treated it as one lot. They had picnics, they had games, they had everything else out there. It's never been in the neighborhood, looked at as two, like separate, like this would be two separate lots. This one lot.
Well, thank you for your, for your, uh, information.
History.
Yeah, history, which is much appreciated.
I'm old enough to have some history.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to speak? Raise their hand. Hearing none. Attorney Casella?
Um, I don't, I don't really have a lot more to add other than just kind of wrapping up what we said earlier regarding there are two separate deed parcels, um, separately taxed. We don't believe merger has occurred, and we do believe there's a valid basis for, um, hardship, uh, granting the variances to construct a conforming house on the lot. So that's, that's it.
And, and before I close public comment, is there?
They're just asking us to look at this as several lots, get the variance for that one. We're not considering merger or not.
You could consider it for whatever, if you feel it was. So, uh, with that, I, I'm going to close public comment. And I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second long as the hearing.
The public, public comment, okay, and now I go into discussion. And you have, you can, we can talk with our attorney in discussion, just if you have any questions.
Well, to me, the fact that it's, it was, it's taxed as, um, and we discounted.
Right.
And that it was stated upfront that it was a non-billable lot and sold as a unit together. I think that kind of makes a statement.
The fact that it's been conveyed continuously as, even on the same document, like, that smells to me like common ownership merger. Um, and the, uh, fact that it was advertised as one property.
Right.
And this very transactionally sounds to me like the effectuation of a merger. The use of it over time demonstrates effectuation of a merger. Uh, so just on the basis that
Um, so just on the basis that there has been a merger and we are not, we, we would not give variance to subdivide.
Yes.
I think answers the question for us.
I think it does too.
On that basis, uh, I'd like to make a motion.
Chuck, we'd love you to make a motion.
But I move that we deny the application for variance, uh, on the ground that, uh, there has been a, a merger, uh, created by the historic uses and by the various, uh, taxation and sale and the deed, uh, conveyances. Um, by that history, I think it demonstrates that the ownership has continuously treated these as all one property. The fact that they may have been described as with their original, uh, plot plans in these twenty, nineteen twenty-two subdivision, does not, to me, indicate that anybody intended that they do anything except transfer all this bunch of land to the next owner.
Right.
Uh, there is no basis, uh, no hardship basis that I can imagine, uh, to, uh, subdivide this one property.
Right.
Uh, and therefore, I'm like, that's my move that we deny.
I just have a question with my attorney, Nick. Have we pretty much summed that up, or do you think there's anything?
I think the reasons provided are.
Okay, so I want to know that. Hearing that, uh, is there a second? Can I get a second?
I'll sit.
All those in favor?
I.
Denied. I wanted to make a question. Your move, okay. Yeah, we'll let them, we'll let them leave, and we'll finish our.
And then we'll get, we'll get on the dog here pretty quick. We'll get a job probably in a couple of weeks. We are in sovereign, didn't we, in her.
It does, yeah, I think it keeps on that one, right? There is, no, it's on South Cove, North Cove.
What do we have to do now? All we have to do is approve the minutes.
That's ours.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Bye-bye. Okay, I would just like to, uh, get a motion. I, I've looked at the minutes, I don't see any issue with them. Anybody have any issues with the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Can I get a second? I'm, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes. Uh, Lori, second, all those in favor, aye.
I abstained because I was not there.
We're not the advocate. Correspondence and announcements, I really don't have any, uh, committee representatives and staff reports, none. I make a motion to adjourn. Certain? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.